This is what we say.
Great.
You're live?
I'm live.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Galen Colley. I'm chairing the Capital Improvement Program tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is a presentation of CIP on behalf of the entire committee, which consists of myself, our vice chair Emily Rosenbaum from the Board of Ed, Katie Stein from the Board of Finance, Al Goldberg for the Selectmen, to my left, Jenny Gordon for the Selectmen. We have some public members, Laura Downs, Alex Providence, and Joan Walker, who knows everything here about CIP. And we have a vacant vacancy from the Board of Finance. This was filled by Jean Fitzgerald, who did a great job for so many years, and I'd like to acknowledge all of her contributions once again. We will be discussing a few things tonight. The CIP Committee Review Process, our five-year recommended capital expenditures, our five-year annual capital budget, and lastly, CIP contact information. So the CIP is an annual process. We reviewed the requests submitted by the first Selectman in October 16th of 2024. We held a public hearing in November 12th, 2024. And then we deliberated over 11 workshop meetings in which departments had made their requests and presentations for various capital projects. And we discussed those. I think all those meetings are on video. If you want to go back and check those out. Tonight is a public hearing on January 21st. And in our last CIP meeting, we passed a recommended budget, which we are going to show and talk about tonight. After this, we hope to move it along and submit to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance for their approval. Now we get to the numbers, and you should see these on your screen. This one is the CIP Recommended Capital Expenditures by Department and Funding Sources for the fiscal years 2025 through 2029 slash 2030. The CIP is a five-year planning document. And we try to line things up so you can't jump the line unless there's extraordinary circumstances. It's a planning document. The expenses and the funding is pay-as-you-go, and it's spread out over five years. So in this, in this table, you can see the requests by department over the five-year span. And if we cut to the bottom line for 2025, 26, you'll see that the total is $5,753,890 for total capital project funds. So the total capital expenditures are about $8 million. You can see that we've offset this with about $2.4 million grants, getting us to our $5.7-ish million. Similarly, you can go and look at the years 2026 through 2029. Some of those numbers will change as we move along. At this point, applause. Let some of the information soak in, or if anybody has any questions or observations. There'll be time later. Dennis, do you have a?
Yes, Dennis Crowe. Just wondering, is there any explanation why there's so much variance, for instance, education?
You mean from year to year within different departments? Most of it's driven by needs, maintenance, and requests. So for instance, some departments might have a vehicle replacement plan that they space this out over three or four years. But in terms of education, there are some things that are urgent right now, like rooftop units replacing roofs that have to be repaired sooner rather than later. I'm not sure I'm answering your question.
Their number, their, their, probably, the general, around, between $3 million and $10,000. I just don't have the data necessary. I guess I have to look that up.
So I can, if I may?
Yeah, please.
So the $3 million in general government, that includes the Madison Hose Building and Emergency Operations Center? The Madison Hose? Yep, the Emergency Operations Center, which is offset by that 2.471 on the bottom with the grant. So the net cost to the town is the difference. And then if you do want to see any of the education or any other details, they are in the complete document unless you have a specific question.
Yeah, it's probably too much to go over on this meeting, so.
Yeah, they're good questions. But the full CIP book does have it itemized by project. We can go off on and talk about that, too.
That's on your minds. What would be the, if the Academy School goes through, where would be the, where would it show the operating costs of that, for that, for until it gets approved?
So, Andy, I'm sorry. For the record, I suppose you have to state your name.
Danny Valbro, so, First Fund Road.
Great, thank you. And so is the question, if Academy goes through, where would the operating expenses show up on this?
Yeah, when will that, when will that show up?
Well, this is, that's a separate, this is for capital, these are for capital projects, infrastructure, not operated expenses.
Okay, so no funds will ever come out of the CIP to pay for that, right?
It's not supposed to be that way, and I doubt that it would.
Because I seen, I seen in one meeting where one of the board members in Academy said that if the referendum didn't go through, there she was going to take the money out of the CIP.
I, I can't speak to that. It's not supposed to be that way.
Right. I'm just doing it as a common citizen, and I watch all the meetings. And what I want to know is why would somebody being on a building committee make a general statement on camera stating that if, in a tizzy, that if this did not go through, she is going to take the money out of the CIP? And I think that highly irregular, and I think that person should be taken off the board. And the committee. Trust me, she's not above it. Okay, and I think you know what I'm talking about, but it's just not, it's just not proper way. A government or a company or corporation shouldn't be run. Nobody should dictate to the public that that, perhaps her as an individual, is going to make that decision and overstep everybody else in the committees and boards. I think that's, I would fire, if I, on my, on my boards, my company, they would be fired immediately if they made that assumption. To overstep me, overstep the Selectmen, you just can't do that. I mean, government is a business. It needs to be run like a business. The only difference between a failing business and a not failing town is because all they have to do is if they really mess up the financials, and it could ever become insolvent because they just raise taxes. Right? So I just think comments like that, among other comments from this person, should not be tolerated, and the people should be not subject to listening to that kind of stuff. What happened to things, people are thinking there's corruption. Okay, and, and we shouldn't have to think that. I've been there 27 years, and I've never said a peep until this act here. Only because I've been looking, I'm saying, what's going on here? You know, I have many, many, many employees, and I got, I got a 12-person board. And like I said, if anybody outstepped their authority and did that, they would be immediately removed from those boards and those committees. And I'm making a comment and a request that this person be taken off those committees and boards.
Well.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, it's your title to speak up. Nothing like that has happened on this committee, and that's outside what we're doing tonight. So, and that's, the entire purpose of the CIP is to prevent funds being moved around for the property to.
We've already mentioned it because funds would have to be moved around, you know, in, in somewhere at some time. And hopefully that the public will know about it, but it makes the public wonder, are funds going to be moved around to save the Academy School?
Well, doing.
Okay, just wanted to make that point, and I want you to think about it, and.
Okay, thank you. And Katie, Katie Stein is on the committee. Would you love to speak?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing. And thank you for mentioning that those comments were not made at a CIP meeting. However, I think it's important to mention that if and when the Academy School goes, it, I don't want to mislead people to think that they may never see Academy in CIP because we have to maintain our buildings, and this is how we do it. And it's planned for, and they are, you know, planned out five years. So if Academy ends up being a community center, there will be CIP projects to touch-up paint, to replace furniture, things as the years go on. They are not, everything is very transparent, which is why these projects go out five and in some cases 10 years, so that they can be planned for. But, you know, I've, I've seen and heard people say that I never want to see a CIP project pertaining to Academy, Community Center, and CIP. Well, that's going to happen because that's just how we maintain our buildings. This is, we do it for every town facility.
Yes, thank you, Katie. I probably wasn't as fair as I should have been in distinguishing between the operating expenses and the capital budget for, for Academy.
Wait till the end?
Pardon?
Do you want me to wait till the end of the meeting, or?
Let's, let's do that maybe, and then we'll.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. And sorry, Katie, I didn't mean to interrupt you if you have anything more to add. Okay, well, we certainly covered this page, so let's move on to the next. The next page on your screen looks at capital funding for the fiscal years 2025, 26 through 2930. And here you see, if you take a look at it on a fund basis as opposed to a department basis, and this is a very important page. On this page, I've note for 20, we're, we're planning for 25, 26. You'll see that the bottom line there for the CIP is about $5.193 million. Then there's $2.918 million of debt service, or total capital funding of $8.11 million. Through the Madison Investment Program, we're aiming for a 4% increase in our total capital funding. This table shows that. So pause a minute if anybody would like to contribute a question or comment. But Dennis.
Dennis Crowe. I don't understand how you get negatives on the NRE. Second line.
So, okay, so if I can. So basically, with the Madison Investment Plan, we're looking at total capital funding into the program. And the top part of this chart is basically how we're distributing the annual capital budget. And if you recall, we infused money into the CNRE fund for those two special appropriations, and we did distribute it. So what this is doing in the outer years is redistributing it just to other funds because CNRE is not our only fund in the CIP. So we're basically distributing the annual capital budget by fund, ambulance, fire, major roads versus CNRE. And we're taking those years where CNRE is showing a negative, we're reallocating funds that were already infused into CNRE into those other funds. Does that make sense?
Maybe I'll talk to you about it.
Okay. You know where I live.
I do. Thank you.
So that was through that page. Of course, this information is on the website, which you can see on the screen, madisonct.org/cip. And in addition, welcome to 10 meetings for Selectmen, Board of Finance. Certainly, I'm happy to answer questions as best I'm able, online and offline. That concludes the presentation part of the budget and the program, what we're recommending. We'll open it up to questions. All right, Katie, please go ahead.
Galen, one other thing I think it's important to mention is that year one is, is all that's going to the voters for the May referendum. The outer years that you pictured are things that will be discussed next year, the year before, the year after that, and the year after that, and the year after that. So there is a lot that still has to happen, and, and so I just wanted to mention that. And then I also wanted to be sure to thank Stacy and Kristen and the whole finance department. This has been my favorite year on CIP. I really appreciate all the explanations we've gotten, diligence of all the town departments that came in to speak with us about each individual project and the really great discussions that we had along the way. So thank you all.
It's, partly it's your favorite year because you did such a great job last year. As Chair, send it up.
Maybe I enjoyed it because I wasn't here.
But, but you're absolutely right. It's like 25, 26 is going to the voters. The rest of it is a planning document. There are real expenditures, but typically we will set aside planning money, sign money the year prior to the actual expenditure. Jan, we're trying to get to you, maybe unmute you.
Janet?
Can you hear us?
Ask to unmute.
Okay, I was on mute, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I'm clear. Thank you.
Yeah, Katie, you just answered my question. I, I was wondering what we were voting for, what, you know, and it is just that, that first, that first column, right? So every year, we, we come back and we vote for that first column, but the other columns give us a view of what's coming up ahead. Is that right?
That's exactly right.
So my question is, where is the Surf Club renovation in all of this? Did you hear that?
Yeah, yeah, so.
We did discuss it, Janet, and I know it's in the document, but it's.
Yeah, there's, so in the CIP book, which is online, I realize that not everybody scrutinizes it every little bit. Neither do I. But the Surf Club is on, it's 26th of that document. There are projects. Stacy, please stop me if I'm speaking. There are upcoming projects for fiscal years 2030, 31 through 34, 35. So those are the out-years, the next five-year window. And those projects include Beach and Rec, Strongfield, Turf Replacement, Beach Rec, Surf Club, and Building Improvements, Public Works Engineering, Public Works Ground Garage, the Fort Path Road Bridge, Coastal Resiliency Projects, and Communications Tower Needs. So those are the next five-year window that we need to get on before.
What Janet's talking about. So in year 2930, we have earmarked that $100,000. And when we look at page 29 in the book, that's where we'll have a project that's going to involve a complete study and plan to renovate the Surf Club property. So the study is what's currently in this book, correct? Because we need to do that before we can start talking about any funding.
Yes, and in prior years, we also had some additional funding money that has been set aside. But again, page 19, the projects that Galen listed, we just kind of wanted everybody to know, we're looking at them. We have a facilities committee now that is studying them, and they are coming our way. We just don't know when and how much. So we didn't want to include them because we didn't know when and how much, but we didn't want you all to know that this isn't our plan, and they will show up at some point.
So Janet, I don't know if we talked over any more of your questions, but you still got the floor.
Yeah, I, so, so wouldn't the study itself not be part of the CIP? Wouldn't the study itself just be money that is allocated in the, in the regular budget to, to do? I mean, are we saying we're going to wait five years for even the study? Or, I mean, does the Surf Club need renovation before that? What's the extent of the renovations? Like what, you know, are we going to be able to, to live with it the way it is? Six, you know, for, for the next six years? If we don't do the study, how do we know?
I'll start beginning. Typically, we do allocate study money from the CIP before the project expenditure. So that's standard operating procedure. And right now, it is slotted for 2029. And to your questions about the status of the Surf Club buildings, and if we need to repair, renovate, and do it sooner, I'm not qualified to answer that right now.
So Janet, there's, you know, two buckets to think about, the operational budget and then the capital budget. So to study the Surf Club building, that would be a capital need. So to study it, even though, you know, it's man-hours and not hammered a nail, it still falls under the capital bucket.
And, and if I could interject here again to help, help answer this, and this is thanks to Kristen, who included me into the minutes. This was from the December 18th CIP meeting, in which the Beacon, Beach and Rec Commission is beginning to formulate a Surf Club master plan. The funding that's in year five of this document will be used to kick off the master plan that is devised. Costs will be adjusted as the project gets closer. Committee members asked what the process is if the project is ready sooner than year five, to your point, Janet. And Ms. Novak stated that the project can be moved forward if the master plan is set and the boards and the public approve moving the project forward. So. So it is being addressed at least in outline.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I was just concerned because when I hear study, I think of a huge project that's not going to involve just one building. I mean, $100,000 for a study, I would think encompasses more than just the one building in the Surf Club. Otherwise, wouldn't you be able to just look at it and evaluate it without a $100,000 study?
Andy, I know you had a question.
Yeah, I get many, many emails from citizens in town, and a lot of it, you know, is about the Academy. A lot of it is about Surf Club. I was in the trades for 40 years. My family's been in the trades for well over 100. I was a building inspector. I, City Hall runs so much different than real life. And you get caught up in all this bureaucracy, and it costs the town so much extra money when you're going to do studies and surveys and this committee and that committee. You could have somebody that's knowledgeable to walk into the Surf Club, okay, within, I'll say, a day. And they can do an assessment of what's going to get done in that town, and the money you're going to pay the so-called experts that come in can be utilized to fix up the Surf Club. The Surf Club's been going downhill for a while, so I've been getting letters from people for a long time. A so-called study should have been done a long time ago. I think you should utilize your building inspector more, and he could probably go in there and say, hey, this is what's got to get done. Except for structural engineering points that maybe have to be addressed in there. He won't be able to handle that, but he should be able to handle just about anything. And any knowledgeable person can say, hey, let's do this. You know, against the point, the Academy School, that's been studied and re-studied and re-studied, and the amount of money that's been wasted on the Academy School is sinful. Okay, and I remember we were at a, a meeting for the vote for the new school. And I'm just talking in general here. I know a lot of it may not pertain, but I'm just trying to give you a general flavor of what the town tells me. And I get hundreds and hundreds of emails from people, you know, in maybe a course of a month. It's that, I remember at a, I remember the Board of Education Superintendent, when they tried to get the extra money for that new school, they want, was it $3 million, $1 million, Jen? Something like that, right?
I don't remember the exact.
It was two, it was $2 million.
Right. It was voted down, okay? The money came from somewhere, got transferred over to somewhere else. So the people's voice didn't really have a voice, okay? But I remember that gentleman looking at me and shaking and said, no. And, and the point was, it's cheaper to build new than to knock down, to, to renovate an existing building. Okay? Why are we doing Academy School? That's older than any school we have here. So, I mean, people see this. People witness this. This administration is losing all accountability. And I think it's not right. It's that people feel like they, they don't have a voice. Okay, they want a major shakeup, and I hope these little tips I can give you, okay? Real world, for some reason, not existent inside of towns, especially big government, okay? Uh, that's why Trump was so successful because he was a businessman, he can figure out the problem and diagnose it immediately. I just have one other, one more point, I had a gentleman, we were at the uh, the viewing party yesterday. I was talking with this, this very successful, well-educated plumber, uh heat expert, does the geothermal, okay? He was never utilized, even though he tried to utilize free services to fix the geothermal buildings and recommend geothermal future buildings, but they ended up putting somebody that really didn't have any major geothermal experience watching over some projects, stuff like that makes the people in town realize that there's something wrong, okay?
I mean, this is, I, I'm going to give you my opinion. You're a friend, but I think that our town government does a really good job and I think it's different from, I think our town government does a really good job. And I think, I think they are transparent and you do have to follow procurement procedures and you have to give people time to review it and you do have to be in compliance with, with state regs pertaining to school buildings, other kinds of buildings. So, um, um, now you have expertise that I don't.
I was also, I was also a uh, facilities director for Sacred Heart at one point and so I'm pretty familiar with what happens in procedures and it was never like this, the Sacred Heart is huge compared to Madison, the facilities.
But um, I, in my opinion, we have an outstanding government, particularly the finance department, facilities.
I'm not, I'm sure you guys do great jobs and you go work only within your parameter. I'm just making a general statement and I'm not speaking of it from Andy, I'm speaking from the citizens in town.
Right, and.
And I think somebody who's, people are so afraid to speak up and uh, I hopefully gave some people, because I don't care, you know.
But that's, but you're also doing your job, which is to, is to inform people, keep them accountable and to, and to give everybody the benefit of your knowledge, which is, which is, which is valuable, so.
I think my job is to save the town money, okay? Keep the taxes down, I want to hear from C I P or the finance, them saying, you know what, we're going to reduce taxes this year. But that will never happen, okay? That's what we need to do, the seniors in town are suffering, okay, they have to move up. The letters, I should bring a stack of letters like this for people, they say they got to sell their house because they can't afford to stay in Madison anymore, do you think that's right?
Part of, part of the reason why we're here is to, is to minimize increases, to smooth things out and to, and to be as cost efficient as possible. So that's all, all.
I will work with anybody in town to bring my expertise in, but they won't put me on a board, they won't put me on a committee because Andy knows too much and Andy can't be controlled. I want what's right for town and nothing else, I don't want something right. I just wanted, and I've been tough on Jen, and it's only for, because you're good Jen. And I know your, your hands are tied, okay, but I'm just doing some Andy's shoulder.
I appreciate it.
And that's the only reason why I do it, I'm tough on everybody, because my wife's tough on me all the time, so you know, it's my way to vent, but you know, you, you need that, I mean, you need somebody in town that's going to say, hey, you know, I've been in the business, I know the business. This, this stuff here, politics, I have no clue, you know, I'm just learning it and uh, I just think government should be run a lot smoother in town. Uh, you should cut the pork and utilize the great people you have in town. Not only political friends on boards, and I'm seeing that a lot. And I don't think that's right, I think you should pick the best people to work on committees and those are the people that should be there, not because, you know, I'm in charge of this and I'm in this department, you can't do that, that's not right for, that, it's not fair to the citizens of Madison. And that's my ten cents worth.
All right, thank you.
I bless.
I bless is right, Andy, I want to thank you for your comments, I want to thank you for.
I'm going to have a coffee someday and we're going to talk it out.
Okay, but before you leave, um, I want just to make you aware that academy is not in the C I P this year. It is a separate bonding referendum. So that is one thing, um, and the other thing, I can tell you, we agree on bureaucracy slowing things down, however, those systems are in place for a reason. Um, and for example, if we're talking about the surf club, um, it's not just about hammered a nail and the, the actual building. Um, it is about um the environment and the beach erosion and safety and state regulations and just like everything we do, so yes, all of us, and if you want to talk about corruption, things, bad things happen when there aren't those checks in place. And so while it, it can be frustrating and for somebody who's been working in town government um for over a decade now, I can tell you that um, you know, it took a very long time and a lot of studies and a lot of community involvement and a lot of voices and even naysayers to um get the school project um started. And a failed referendum um the first time around, so I, I appreciate your voice, I really do. Um, I am so grateful for Galen and his comments on um the way things work in town government and I am so grateful for my colleague sitting around the table there, I'm sorry I'm not there in person. But um, I, I, I know we work really well together, we don't always agree. Um, and I, I am grateful to say there's not a lot of politicking happening. So while things might not be going a particular way, um, I, we work really well together even when we disagree, so that's all I'm going to say. But thank you for being here tonight, I think this is the biggest crowd we've ever had for C I P public hearing, so Dennis and Andy, thanks for being here.
Thank you. We have a board finance member, Matt Gordon, who's in the audience, so we'd like to speak, so Matt, go right ahead.
Hey, everyone, uh, so I just want to, you know, give my thanks and Mr. Valen Broso, thank you for putting out the comments. A lot of them um definitely resonate as, as we go forward, but I do want to make sure we don't take away from the fact, thank you so much for this committee, for the work that you've done. Expertly chaired by Mr. Galen, but also a big thanks to Stacy and her team because this whole plan of C I P is fantastic in smoothing out the expended, the expected expenditures going forward. Um, it definitely helps the taxpayers and this is a fantastic plan, so thank you for starting this and continuing it.
Yeah, thank you, I.
Thank you, Matt.
Really do echo that. Um, are there any other questions or comments?
One, one final question. I, I would assume that if the referendum in May passes, that would change all these future year numbers for the C I P?
It could, I mean.
The referendum would have to add money. You know, your current thinking is you would add costs to cover the increased construction costs. So I would take that increased bonding, yeah, whatever else.
I think that's a savings, yeah.
And that was one thing that we did bring up as just kind of reminder points uh during the meetings now. Again, what we're voting on this year is that first column, the uh twenty five, twenty six C I P. So I don't think we would expect to see any changes there, where we could potentially have to make adjustments would be in the out years if we saw any variations in our bonding um amounts and that sort of thing.
And again, we would um infuse any changes into the Madison Investment Plan and still try to smooth out any impact of um additional debt service that the referendum has.
So that, I guess it's a good time to adjourn this presentation, thank you.
Just have fun.
We can continue it, so, but maybe for this presentation, we'll, we'll call it a night. Thank you for joining everybody.
Great job, Galen, thank you.